I call to order the November 16, 2020 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Mr. Lindy, please lead us in the pledge.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Mrs. Bates, present.
Mrs. Powers, present. Mr. Lindy?
Here.
Mr. Messer?
Here.
Mr. Morosky?
Here.
President Jones?
Here.
I need a motion to revise the agenda with the following change, with the following change. Under the item for presentations, the number one item, five-year forecast, that it's being changed and it will be called the Financial Updates and Timelines Report.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Okay, members of the public who wish to speak during hearing, the public must request to do so during the first 10 minutes after the start of the meeting. To speak, you will need to send a request by clicking the chat button, submit your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, and your contact information if you want a direct response to any questions you might have. In keeping with the board's standard practice for hearing the public, you must click the visibility icon when you are recognized to speak. Individuals who request to be heard after the first 10 minutes of the meeting will not be recognized to speak during this hearing. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting October 28, 2020, the business meeting October 28, 2020, special meeting November 4, 2020, and the business meeting November 4, 2020.
Don't move.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved as presented. Ms. Powers, please present the November 6, 2020 Student Achievement District and Instructional Performance Committee meeting report.
Thank you, President Jones. On November 6, Dr. Rudnick presented to our committee about the fine arts curriculum. He's the Fine Arts Curriculum Manager. He focused on Measure 1B and 1C of the Strategic Plan of Understudent Center Decision Making. He provided information about the CPS Jazz Academy, which he explained it was an extension of participants this year, which we were very pleased about, and the ongoing continued art experiences that our students are having this year. He talked some about the cross-cultural curricular, which is math-infused at Ethel Taylor, which I thought was very interesting, and inquired about how Ethel Taylor was identified to participate in this experience. And he noted that research has shows the collaboration between art and helping improve math scores. And I just thought that was impressive that that was happening. He did report that due to budget constraints, the after-school arts program that was offered at the 11 elementary schools was not being offered this year. Board member or committee member Messer identified and noted the prioritizing that this should be something that we establish through foundation fundraising, trying to keep the art going through the district and both committees. Morosky and I agreed. We talked some in other business about, I noticed that the marquee in Chevy's school was not, did not have the school name. And it's been for years that they haven't had a name out. And I just recently just inquired about why they don't. Assistant Superintendent on my report that she will work with facilities about the marquee. In addition, we talked about across the district branding, getting back to that. We also talked about a letter or email, and most of us received it from Ms. Community Member Kelly Rozell regarding her father, Ulysses Rozell, and having, the request was for the field at Stargate Stadium to be named after her father. And what the committee agreed upon was to bring this to the board for further discussion about this request, with the hopes that Ms. Rozell would get a letter from President Jones regarding what the decision or the conclusion is of that discussion. These are the minutes, and I present these to you as written.
Are there any, do board members have questions or comments? I do have a comment. Okay, regarding the request to name the field, I believe the full board had, we went through a process where we, student achievement recommended criteria by which we would review that. And there was a decision made that the superintendent would do, would be the person to communicate with the family or with the person making the request. So I am asking that, it's, I don't think it's something that, you know, based on the criteria that we gave, and it was pretty solid criteria for how we rename a school or facility. So I am going to ask that the superintendent's office take charge of that process, since that's what the board had decided, unless people remember differently. Okay, great. Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, that's what I remember too, in the most recent communication, I think, to the Gilligan family. I was interested in-
Talk into your mic. I can't, we can't hear you.
I was interested to know Mr. Messer's suggestion about a foundation, you know, from the arts and what have you. I think, I don't want us to lose track, I think it's a great idea, but I don't want us to lose track of what we've been talking about for a couple of years now, which is an actual CPS foundation itself, with just all the other things that have come up, but many, many of the other school districts in Hamilton County have one, and I think that would be great. So I'm glad that you resurfaced that to a certain extent, Mr. Messer.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's, that's the tie I was trying to make, that I thought that would be an ideal thought, that if we were able to move forward the CPS Foundation, personal opinion, just given the city that we live in and the dedication to the arts, that I thought that would be a very easy spot for that person to begin raising funds.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments about that report? Okay, Mr. Morosky, please present Policy and Equity Committee report.
Excellent, thank you, President Jones. The Policy and Equity Committee met on 6, 3:30 PM. And we began by discussing the anti-racism policy and the task force that had been convened. Just as a reminder, that task force had three students, two parents, three staff, two at-large community members, two alum, African-American chamber reps, all in Cincinnati reps, Center for Closing the Health Gap, Children's Hospital, Preschool Promise, Urban League, the YM and YWCA representatives. Mia Bauckey of Cohere was there. You'll remember Cohere when they were called Bridgable. And they have helped us on a number of things, from our anti-bullying initiatives to the FC Cincinnati community input. And they helped convene the task force and garner feedback, all of which you have seen. So we went through that and the new suggestions from my colleagues sitting up here on the stage. So I relayed President Jones, Mr. Lindy, and Ms. Bolton's comments in their entirety in the committee meeting and the Health and Wellness Committee minutes as well. All of that feedback was taken by Ms. Stephanie Scott, Assistant General Counsel, and put into the current revised draft that was sitting at your tables this evening that we'll talk about later, so I won't go into that. A few notable things came up in that conversation, though, that I would like to highlight. One was, in addition to relaying everybody's feedback, Committee Member Messer recommended an Office of Anti-Racism and/or Inclusion in the district. He also asked how the policy would get implemented and who would manage the document. In a world where that office exists, obviously, it would be housed there. Action items, I agreed, and so did Ms. Powers with Mr. Messer's recommendation. And so we passed that along as what would that look like in a world where we are creating new offices, such as diversity and inclusion, anti-racism, et cetera. Today, we'll discuss the new draft, and I'll pause there. One last action item, which I had said at the last meeting, that we would love to be able to vote on a final draft of this in December, which would be six months from the date of its creation, which we feel is a good amount of time for the discussion and input we've had. So excited to talk tonight about the new draft with y'all's input. OTES 2.0, I will not belabor this point, that was supposed to be passed in early September, and that is, I'll just own it, my fault for not getting that on the agenda sooner. I would like to thank Eve Bolton, who you will see recognized in the minutes, who was really an expert on this issue and instructive to me and our committee on what OTES 2.0 looked like. That's the evaluation system for teachers and guidance counselors. This has the support of Ms. Kendra Phelps from CFT, who was sitting in on meetings as long ago as last year about all of this, I believe, right, Ms. Bolton? So you'll see that new policy. And then we did our regular rotating policies. You'll see there at the end, there are resolutions to amend those policies. I've gotten some quick, early feedback. There's some just sort of wording things that we may want to talk about, but we can leave that for those resolutions. And if we have to shelve them, then we shelve them and move them out of Policy Committee in December. I present the committee minutes as written.
Thank you. Do board members have questions or comments? Ms. Bolton?
Regarding that possible office being established, I mean, first and foremost, I know we've talked before when we first established the equity policy and how we would kind of go about doing something similar, but I would just say, put it on, believe it or not, we're still talking about FY '21 budget, but put that or keep that as a part of the list for FY '22 as a possibility. Great suggestion.
Good place that, for work session, maybe to have a discussion about that for FY '22.
I think that's right, yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, I need a motion to approve the committee reports.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, board minutes are approved.
All right.
Okay, we have two presentations. I'm going to ask Ms. Wagner, the first presentation on financial updates and timelines.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So as, at the last board meeting, we discussed a pivot of instructional models dependent on the community safety measures. And as a result, sometimes our staffing will have to be modified, which then drives the budget. And because of those things, we needed more time to revise the budget again, and then having that impact on the five-year forecast. So I was asked to present a new timeline, which is shown up here on the screen. So Thursday at Finance Committee, we will be talking about the draft forecast and its assumptions, as well as giving a budget update, hoping that we can get an approval on the budget and the forecast on the 23rd. I'm required to file the five-year forecast by November 30th, so the 23rd is my last option to get that finalized. And the budget feeds into the forecast, and the forecast feeds into the next budget. But then when that's over, we'll start kicking off the next budget cycle. But I've shown on the timeline, there are three budgets in December, I'm sorry, three board meetings in December, that if we have to do some tweaking to the budget, we can do that then. The other news I wanted to give you an update with, things are starting to move rather quickly, is the new state funding formula. So if you remember, Ohio's state formula has been ruled unconstitutional four times in the Deroff case. And so Representative Cupp and Patterson got together, created a new formula. They've spent at least three years developing this formula, and it really goes towards, it's very similar to the way we do student-based budgeting. But what it attempts to do is to fund the base cost of a typical student. And in your handout, the very last page, I've given you the formulas. So it shows you all the classroom ratios and how many supplemental staff members have to go out in the school. So they'll, they drop our enrollment in there, they come up, run it through the formula. Once they determine the base cost, they then add the categorical funding. So it's weighted for students with special needs, gifted, English language learners, and they have a poverty or economic disadvantaged measure that is then added on to the base cost of a typical student. The good news is, the economically disadvantaged per pupil rate is being increased from $272 per student to $422 per student, and it will not be phased in, it will be in year one. The rest of the formula is going to be a six-year phase in, which is a little disconcerting. Another good news for the district is our state share is no longer dependent on relative wealth. So in the current formula, or the old formula, none of our economics could have changed, and something could have happened in another district on the north side of the state, and it could have changed our state share. Now it's only dependent on our economic measures, and it's much more simplified, so it looks at property values and our residential median income. Also, good news, there will be no more pass-through funding. So all the students that are funded through charter school, community school tuition, Ed. Choice vouchers, autism, Peterson Scholarship, and open enrollment will not pass through us anymore. That's a positive thing.
Oh, wow. Yay.
They've also added some transportation reimbursements, so that they recognize that we can't be as economical when we transport students in non-public and community schools. So the community school students will carry a 1.5 multiplier, and non-publics will be a 2.0 multiplier. That'll, that'll increase our transportation reimbursement. Go ahead. A word of caution, if you will, if adopted, the way it is right now, it's a six-year phase in. We don't yet understand the scope and the speed of that phase in. Two, this formula is going to cost the state of Ohio $1.9 billion more than they're funding K-12 education. We don't know how they're going to cover that. We don't know if they're going to add it to the budget, or they're going to start tweaking the formula down to make it cost less. And we also don't know, student wellness has not been factored into this formula at all. They don't know if they're going to keep it on as an add-on, or if they're going to try to phase it into this formula. So as those things come to play, we'll certainly keep you informed. But as it stands today, the formula the way it is, as it would be in the six-year of implementation, comparatively speaking, our per-student funding from the state will increase $1,700 per child per year. That's an impact of the pass-through funding, no longer there, and the increase in transportation, and just the recognition that the base cost of a child in education is more than the residual funding factor that they were using in the past. So you have a resolution tonight. We are asking board support to support this resolution. We're hoping they'll adopt it in lame duck, and then they'll have six months to get it out to us, and so that it can impact our next year's budget. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions or comments? Mr. Morosky, followed by Mr. Lindy?
Thanks, Ms. Wagner. This is great news. Been following with great interest. I just have one question, and it doesn't necessarily pertain directly to us, but I fear that it could. So with your words of caution, I think they're extremely valid, well-thought-out words of caution. With no pass-through money, which is great, my brain goes, I think, maybe cynical or dark quickly, I apologize. But I'm, I worry about like a parallel funding stream that's not based on the same sort of metrics as ours. Like, where will that money come from for those schools? And will it have a similar robust sort of structure? You see what I'm saying? And where is that money going to come from?
Well, that's part of that $1.9 billion increase, and so we don't know the answer to that yet.
That gives me, and again, I'm not, I'm all about the resolution. I'm not advocating for the pass-through, but I do, my brain does go kind of cynical quick of like, what is this pot of money, and is it going to, I don't know, I just, reservations. And you saying that gives me more reservations, but I still, I really like the Cup Patterson, I like where it's headed.
Yeah, I strongly advocate for this formula. It's not perfect by any means, but it is a huge step in the right direction for us. It'll become, it'll become less reliant, this district will become less reliant on local property taxes. There will not be a cap either. So if you remember, over the last couple of years, we've lost $5 million a year because we were growing faster than the formula would allow us to do. So there is no cap at the end of this. We can grow as fast as, and then it will help support that financially.
Okay, Mr. Lindy?
Yeah, thank you, President Jones. I was just curious if this came up on the Call It All, Treasurer Wagner, the $1.9 billion just seems like a huge dollar figure. And are they, it strikes me that this is also in the middle of the pandemic, when I imagine state tax revenues will be down rather than up. Did they talk at all about like the political likelihood that this thing goes through?
No, they recognize that it's going to be a heavy lift, but that's why they have a six-year phase in. So it's really exciting, but when you think about six years, it's, it's going to be incrementally good in small ways.
Great. Just to echo Mr. Morosky, I also think the resolution is great. I think the bill seems fantastic, and I hope it passes. I'm just trying to manage my own expectations.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Messer?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I agree. This is like wonderful news, and having been on Finance Committee for a couple of years, this was something that was always talked about, because, you know, we're trying to plan for long-term and assure the future financial foundation for CPS, you know, to the dollar amount, first of all, they've cut plenty. So if we just go back and figure out what's been cut, I think that'd be a good thing to put into the, the letters and everything, that you've cut all of this, we're actually, just a portion of it goes back in. And I understand it's a large amount of money. Is that the only reason for the six-year phase in? Or did they give any other background? That's what, the one thing, I was so excited until I heard that. And I thought maybe you'd give some perspective tonight if they shared it of, why so long? Because the need is today.
Right. No, I go as in, in the webinars, I've been on two webinars, and that wasn't addressed. They keep, they're still pretty high level. I still haven't seen then all the data behind the values that they're giving us. On the simulation, they just tell us, this is what you have now versus, this is what you're going to have in the sixth year, but they don't show me the math behind it. I was also surprised that our state share went from 47.9 to 46.1. So I was surprised to see it drop. But all the urbans dropped a little bit. So, but I want to get behind the math to see all that. But now, they didn't go into the whys of this, why six years, three biennial budgets. So a lot can change.
Right. Bolton?
Yes, thank you. I think the urgency tonight regarding the passage is that another proposal, of course, has been proposed in, I won't say in opposition, but is somewhat contrary to this. So it's important for us to take the advantage as best we can. Even though everybody's been working hard on this for years, especially our treasurer, I share some of the worry and some of the cynicism of spreading it over three biennial budgets, and that would be, you know, this governor and perhaps another governor and whatever. But it does represent two or three of the most important parts of what's unfair about our current revenue. So it does appear that people have been listening, and I appreciate all the work that the district has done for a long time to try to make this case. So let's hope for the best and work for the best. And it would be probably very useful for at least our Hamilton County state representatives and state senators to hear from us specifically about the need to pass this. So maybe we can make that an assignment, and I know testimony's been given, and we've been working on that, but maybe redoubling that effort would be a good idea.
Right. And so I did want to say, so we have some standardized lezzers, OASBO, put out there for all of us to start sending to our legislators, and I also signed up to testify if they need me. So I'll let you know if that happens.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Ms. Wagner? Superintendent Mitchell? Good evening.
So tonight, we're going to provide an update to COVID-19, not only the health perspective, but also academics. Next slide, please. So I'm going to go over what we're going to talk about this evening. The community health data will be provided by our chief strategy officer. The data that we will provide is the exact same data that was provided by Dr. Meehan and Dr. Khan last week. This data comes straight from the Health Department. If you're interested in viewing this data yourself, you can go to the Health Department's website. In addition, we also have our own CPS dashboard that will talk about the number of student confirmed cases as well as staff confirmed cases. So please visit our CPS website to be able to see our dashboard, and it is updated on a daily basis. The second thing that we're going to cover is to provide an update as it relates to distance learning and academics, and that will be provided by our deputy superintendent. I believe that at our last meeting, I talked about the need for consistency and the ability to be able to stabilize our system, which is what is needed right now, not only for our students, but also for our staff, as we consider how fast COVID-19 is spreading across the city of Cincinnati as well as the county. So in terms of staffing, as you recall, the consideration last week was to move to distance learning based upon the number of staff members who have COVID-19 and are in isolation, and the number of staff members who are in quarantine because of a close contact. And I kind of compared this to popcorn, that kernels were popping up all over the place throughout the district. We would get a team back in a school, and then three days later, another set of people who would be out. Just as an example, and this is all because of the spread that's taking place within our community. In a particular school, over the weekend, eight staff members were identified as being COVID-positive, and there were 20 close contacts within a school. So you can see the, the impact that this has on our staffing in terms of spread. In a department here at Central Office, as a result of one situation, one confirmed case, we now have four out of five people who are at home as of today. So you can see that it's popping up all over the place. Those are just a few examples. So big picture. And this part is really sometimes challenging and difficult to understand, because each one of us, we internalize the situation, COVID-19, the spread of it, schools being in distance learning, schools being in blended learning, we all internalize it from a very personal perspective in terms of what does it mean for me personally. We understand and recognize there's the voice of our students, and what I've seen, well, who's speaking for our students? We also understand there's the voice of our staff, and sometimes it's very difficult to separate those two voices. And I say that because if we want our students to receive the best quality instruction, then our staff have to feel as if they are well taken care of. And so those voices actually merge together. Our desire from the very beginning of the school year, the board's desire, was to have our students in-person learning. That is our desire. But based upon the health data for the community, that is not the safest place at this moment as it relates to people being in school, based upon the number of staff members who are absent, and our ability to execute on the safety protocols. Just as an example, previous to Friday in the city of Cincinnati, we were averaging about 100 new cases a day. Friday, it was 500 new cases. So this has an impact on Cincinnati Public Schools, like other districts all across the nation, as well as health facilities, who are running out of staff to be able to care for sick people. As a matter of fact, I received an email today from the governor asking me to participate in a conference call with him tomorrow, along with the mayor and the health commissioner for the city of Cincinnati to talk about COVID-19 in Cincinnati. So it's a very serious situation, as everyone knows. So there's this big picture of an entire district and the perspective of the entire district. district, not just how it relates to us as individuals, which is really important, but thinking about the large district. So last week, an assignment was given to the administration to explore the possibility of bringing certain classrooms in session and face-to-face, for example, specialized classrooms, as well as our little students in terms of preschool, possibly up through third grade, as we talk about the third grade reading guarantee. So just let me give you just one perspective as it relates to the specialized classrooms. In having a conversation with a teacher who teaches in a specialized classroom, she conveyed that it's really hard to even have six feet of social distance differences in our specialized classrooms because the staff members are not only teaching, but they're also changing diapers, they're wiping saliva from our students' mouths, and these are all things that they want to do and have been doing for years, very dedicated and special people. But in a health crisis like this, you can see why this could cause some concerns for our staff members, to be able to keep them safe. Sometimes the students who are in our specialized unit cannot wear a face shield or face mask, and so that also poses another concern for our staff members and the other students within the school. Recognizing that these students have rights, and we validate them, we understand them, but I'm just giving you the realities. Sometimes students are spitters, which makes it challenging to be able to have the safety protocols in place. And sometimes they are yellers, which means that sometimes saliva will come from their mouth. Again, I'm not saying anything negative about these students. I'm just giving the facts as to what happened, and we have very, very special, dedicated people who care for them every day. And so we don't believe that we would be able to bring back our students and our specialized units in-person while the rest of the district is in distance learning. In many instances, we've had to close down specialized classrooms because of close contact. And again, I've expressed that close contact is hard with many of these students, and we want to be close to them. I was also asked about our little students, pre-K through third grade, as we thought about, and the team we looked at, a cohesive system to stabilize that system, and then just the logistics of being able to monitor who's in and who's out on any given day. Transportation would possibly have some rerouting to do as it relates to a specialized group coming in. In addition to, there would be an extra added complexity to technology. And so I say that because you would have your students who are in distance learning, let's say your fourth through 12th graders were all in distance learning, then you would have your students who are in-person, whether that's your primary students in your specialized classrooms and possibly your ESL students or ELL students, in addition to the students at the primary level who don't want to come back to in-person, who want streaming. So we're talking about three models running all at the same time on the same bridge. Staffing, we still do believe would be a concern as we're continuing to see an increase of our staff members with COVID-19. And yes, we would have more subs to be able to cover them, but the challenge is, is that now, typically when a teacher would have a sub, maybe it's a week usually at most, unless it's for an extended period of time. Now with COVID-19, it's at least 10 days, 14 days. And so to be able to provide that coverage for all of those popcorn situations, we think would logistically be very hard to do and would create a system that is not stable and may take our attention away from really providing high-quality distance learning. So that is the perspective that we've looked at as it relates to the big picture and the follow-up assignment that was given by the board. At this point in time, I'd like for our chief strategy officer to come forward, and she's going to talk about our community health data, followed by our deputy superintendent, who will talk about distance learning. Thank you.
Good evening. So we will start our review of the community health measures today with the number of positive COVID cases in Hamilton County schools. The number of new student COVID cases, and this data came out last Thursday, November 12th, was 108 new student cases and 85 new staff cases. Those numbers increased from the week prior. The week prior was 82 student cases and 37 staff cases. The cumulative number of student cases in public schools is over 300, and cumulative staff cases is over 300, and that is since this system began tracking these cases on September 7th. You can also see the data for the charter schools and the private schools. On the next slide, you will see our city daily new cases. You can see that this weekend, we reached a new peak in the city of 247 new cases on Sunday. Our seven-day average, as shown on this chart, has also reached a new maximum at 176 for the seven-day average. This is double where it was 14 days ago on November 3rd. On the next slide, you'll see the 14-day trend in city seven-day average, and you can see that only one day in the last 14 days was a decreasing average. This most recent seven-day average of 176 cases translates to 58 daily new cases per 100,000. The positivity rate has also increased. This is new data we just received this morning. The city of Cincinnati is at 7.2%, and Hamilton County outside of the city is at 10.9%. And finally, the average length to get test results remains unchanged at about two days. And to continue the presentation on an update for distance learning is Tiana Amat.
Good evening. I'm here to just give you a brief update on distance learning and how we're making that transition. First, I want to remind the community, we are moving to distance learning on Monday, November 23rd through January 4th. This is a five-day-a-week distance learning model. We will continue to monitor our health data, and this decision was made due to the staffing challenges. We heard you loud and clear in really being strategic and intentional in our communication. So here's a timeline. Last Tuesday, a district email and robocall went out to all staff and families. There was also a media advisory. On Thursday, there was discussion with union leadership. There was a meeting with principals and all directors. And then principals were giving a draft email and a robocall script to share with families. On Friday, it was expected that principals and directors meet with their staff or departments to let them know of the details going into distance learning. Today, HR is sending out communication to all staff regarding roles and responsibilities. And then tomorrow, we will be sending out another communication from our communication office to all families. So what does this look like for our students? We've been here, and we've grown in distance learning. We want to remind students of the transition and the awesome job that they did starting in August. And one, it's being prepared. So Group A, which their last day in-person will be on Wednesday, and Group B will be on Friday. So we want to make sure that they have all the tools they need to be successful. So making sure that they have all the technology, textbooks, and just communication, schedules, office hours, so that they're ready to transition back to distance learning. We did have students who are gaining their access through Schoology. We want to remind those families that we are now going to the five-day-a-week of teacher-directed instruction, so they can participate in that as well, and that CDA students can return if they choose to. And they can do that by calling 363-0123. It is important that our public, our staff, our students are aware that we are open. School is open. Learning continues. So school office hours will be held two days a week, Wednesday and Thursday, 7:30 to 2:00. We did it early for our families who want to go into the office during, before going to work or at lunch. Wednesdays, we will have our meal hubs, so making it convenient for our families while they're on-site, if they need to take care of any business, that they can come into our schools. And Central Office will remain open Monday through Friday. So the last part of this presentation is in two parts. One, talking about principals in schools, and the message that we shared with our principals was to first, to communicate these bullet points. When we first did distance learning, we prepared a parent guide, so we wanted to make sure that our families refer back to that guide, to send it out in email. We did send home physical copies in multiple languages early in the fall. Our schools are rescinding distance learning schedules by the teachers with their office hours, also how to contact the schools, and our health offices, they will remain open. And anything else, any other information that is needed, we want to make sure we communicate with our family, and that they have all the materials they need to be successful at home. And again, we gave the timeline, the communication timeline, to our principals to communicate this information, along with scripts from a robocall and an email. For our teachers, we wanted them to have flexibility so they can choose to work from the classrooms or home. We will continue with PD, professional development, on Mondays. We're asking all of our teachers, if you decide to work from home, that you take your personal belongings, pets and plants, home. And to reacquaint yourself, we also had a educator's guide specifically on distance learning. So our curriculum department has shared that information out. For our PARS, who are a vital part of teaching and learning in our schools, and their primary goal is to support students in helping with making sure that they're logging on to their Google Meets and other social emotional needs. So PARS who need access to technology, they can still come into the building and access devices and Wi-Fi. Principals will meet with PAR professionals to be very clear and specific on roles and responsibilities. For our security, we will do a brief, a temporary reassignment to some of our security guards from high school to elementary to help maintain the safety procedures and protocols at our schools, and that will be coming from the district office. Our clerical staff will be in Wednesdays and Thursdays. Now, due to the nature of some responsibilities, people will report to the building from dining services, facilities, transportation, custodial, and trades. Now on to Central Office. The minimum expectation is still to have people come in two days a week, although we're open Monday through Friday. Schedules will be worked on and needed to be submitted by November 20th, so we can ensure all work is done effectively, efficiently, and everyone's on the same page. Some general expectations is to be very clear. We are open, and work needs to be completed regardless of working from home or in the building. HR will be sending out roles and responsibilities, and everyone will fill out their weekly log. We've done this in the past. And then the supervisors will continue to monitor work hours and work with their team members. I also want to remind our public of some of the fantastic services that our district offers that we will continue to offer. Wednesdays will be our meal hubs, where we would distribute meals. All health centers will remain open, along with the dental services. Mental health services, OT and PT, will be offered via telehealth. Nurses will be on-site and by appointment only, so if you need to access a nurse, you can do that with Cincinnati Public Schools. And we will continue with our partnership with our local universities, with student teaching, and they can maintain and help with learning through their learning remotely. And lastly, just wanted to give a quick update on COVID testing. We will continue with COVID testing for our staff this week, and then pause when we go to distance learning. And then for our students and staff, as far as reporting, reporting is still very important. So staff should report any COVID cases to our hotline, and then our students to our nurses. That concludes the distance learning portion.
Thank you, Tiana and Sarah, and that concludes our presentation and update as it relates to COVID-19 operationally as well as academically. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Questions? Board members? Mr. Messer?
Just a couple of comments. I just want to say thank you for the flexibility for the staff. I think that's a really gracious acknowledgement of the diverse situations that our staff are in, personally and professionally. So I think that's a wonderful addition to this plan. As a parent, I just want to say I think the communication has just been flawless because got the robocall, principal has communicated, teachers have communicated, and then we've gotten other additional. So I really feel like the communication is really clicking, so thank you for that. And then, you know, I have so many friends that are family, frankly, that are finding out that next week, they're going virtual, and they're finding out, like today and tomorrow, the announcements are coming and everybody's nervous. And I think that it was really wise of you to recommend that with a little extra notice because it is giving our families an opportunity to plan, as well as our staff, and to prepare the children. And I think that change management for them is important, so thank you for your leadership there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions and comments? Ms. Bolton?
Yes, thank you for the reports. Appreciate it. One thing to emphasize is the availability of the services, instructionally, and the health services and the food services. I really appreciated that being shared with the community today. And the other thing is that I, as we may sometime during the year have a vaccine, and we would not necessarily be among the first because it's not necessarily where schools are, you know, the big spread engines, but it would be, it's great that we continue to have the infrastructure so that when vaccinations begin to be used in schools, we are ready, and we have a decade or more of that kind of infrastructure so that it would be a natural place to begin if need be, and if we're kind of in the running. But really appreciate all the additional services available. I think that's very important to our families and our students.
Thank you. Mr. Lindy?
First of all, I want to say thank you again for the enormous amount of work that's gone into the last couple of weeks and for the great information that we're getting on the board and in the meetings. I think one of the things you shared, Superintendent, and I want to apologize because I just was distracted for a while. I just was distracted for a moment, but I think you shared, um, that we, when it comes to special education classrooms, when it comes to younger kids, we would not be able to bring some of those groups back at this point. Would you mind just saying the why behind that one more time? And again, um, it just, I apologize, I was distracted earlier.
Okay. So, I'm going to ask my tech team to bring up the big picture slide because that's where I outline those items. So, my apologies for not being clear. Um, so, we did explore, would you like me to go through the, the entire explanation?
No, no, and it, it might have been quite clear.
Okay.
Uh, just, just the specific part about, um, younger kids and special education?
Yes. So, I talked about in our specialized classrooms that it's very hard to, in some instances, not have close contact, that our kids, um, and our staff members are far closer than six feet apart. Um, I talked about in many of those instances, our staff members are feeding and come in contact with saliva. Um, they also change diapers, and so they're coming in contact with bodily fluid. Um, and there obviously are proper ways to do it, but you're not obviously six feet apart or even three feet apart. Um, I also explained the fact that, um, in some of our specialized classrooms, our students have a very difficult time and have a medical waiver to not wear a mask or a face shield, so you can understand how that might translate to, um, saliva or droplets from the nose actually coming in contact with our staff members. In terms of thinking about our small kids, I highlighted that if I think about the system as a whole, um, just creating that cohesive, consistent, stabilized system, um, that will help us be able to focus a little bit stronger on the, um, the, um, distance learning, which is what we're most concerned about beyond, um, safety, that transportation, there would possibly be some rerouting that would have to take place as it relates to transportation, that technology, there would be three models that would be operating at the same time. One would be your distance learning for, let's say, your fourth through 12th grade students, and then you have your kids who would be in-person, whether that's your specialized classrooms, your English language learners, and your pre-K through third grade students. That's a second system. And then, the third system would be streaming for any of the pre-K through third grade kids who don't want to come back to in-person learning. And so, we believe that that weight on the bridge would cause the bridge to collapse. In addition, the last point that I brought up, which is the real reason we've gone to distance learning, is having enough staff still to be able to operate those classrooms when you have that popcorn effect of staff members being out for a period of time. You know, in many instances, a staff member might be out for two days, three days, five days, but with COVID-19, you're out at a minimum of 10 days. And so, having the subs in place to be able to cover that, um, we believe would be a challenge. We really did look at this. We really did, uh, try to come up with, um, a yes. And so, for those reasons, we, um, are not recommending to have in-person learning for any of our students at this particular time. Thank you.
Okay, I, I just have a question, Superintendent, and thank you for the report. Um, I think I have the answer in there, but I just wanted to clarify. So, one of the, just looking, thinking about some of our previous data that has been given to us, there was some concern expressed in the numbers of kids who were not necessarily connecting on distance learning. So, if I'm to understand this, um, is that one of the functions of the PARAs as directed by their school? So, the schools will monitor that and PARAs may have that responsibility for connecting with them?
Yes, so it'll, um, be a triage approach, and we have talked about and thought about this, um, because we looked at what are the barriers for, uh, distance learning working? That was one of the major ones. So, it'll be a triage in terms of the classroom teacher, the PAR professional, as well as the school's social worker.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Wonderful. Thank you for the two very strong and positive reports. Thanks. All right. So, we are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. The board takes pride, the board prides itself on being as transparent and, and as open as possible. Consistent with the state's direction to minimize public gatherings, we are convening this video conference call to include opportunity for public comment. Here again are the specific instructions for participation in hearing of the public. Members of the public who wish to speak during the board meeting must re, must make requests through the chat feature, including your full name, affiliation to the district, school community, and contact information for response to questions. This request models standard practice if we were meeting in-person in the ed center. Treasure Wagner and Daniel Hoynes will be our timekeepers. Once the request has been granted, you will be invited to enter. Please click on the visibility icon to go interactive. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When the timer goes off, your two minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. We ask that your public commentary be respectful of all those listening in. Thank you. And I believe, how many do we have, Treasure Wagner?
I think it's 15.
Okay. Ready?
Yes. Our first speaker is Jason Munzel, followed by Liam O'Shaughnessy, followed by Alice Flanders. Go ahead, Mr. Munzel.
Hi. My name is Jason Munzel. I'm a member of the Cincinnati community and a McNIC student. My email is jc.munzel@hotmail.com. I wanted to request the complete withdrawal of police from all Cincinnati public schools. Goes to be a comfortable place for all students, and I believe that police presence does the opposite of this. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our, our next speaker is Liam O'Shaughnessy, followed by Alice Flanders, followed by Owen Durico. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you and good evening. My name's Liam O'Shaughnessy. I'm a student at Wyoming High School. Cincinnati Public Schools needs to address the racism in their building and work with the Youth Activist Coalition to address this problem. According to the civil rights data collection, there's a disproportionate amount of in-school suspensions given to black students in comparison to white students at CPS. Uh, in fact, just one suspension doubles the chances of dropping out, so CPS needs to work to reduce this educational inequity. In addition, black students are two to three times more likely to be arrested, uh, than white students in Ohio, so we need to stop criminalizing our students inside schools and get, uh, cops out of CPS. And finally, we need to implement restorative justice instead of punitive justice because the facts show that restorative justice is more effective. So, I would ask that Cincinnati Public Schools helps work with, uh, the Youth Activist Coalition to create a more just educational future. Thank you.
Yep. Our next speaker is Alice Flanders, followed by Owen Durico, followed by Catrice Carpenter. Go ahead, Ms. Flanders.
Hi there. Uh, my name is Alice Flanders, and I'm an alumna of Cincinnati Public. I'm speaking today to back the voices of the students asking you to divest from the, to divest from the Cincinnati Police Department and to get police out of schools. I understand and appreciate that you all, some parents and some teachers, and even some students, may have positive relationships with individual officers. However, the school-to-prison pipeline is real, and any discussion around anti-racism that does not include divesting from police is incomplete. The talk we heard earlier sounds great. Please now back it up with action. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Owen Durico, followed by Catrice Carpenter. Go ahead, uh, Dr. Durico.
All right. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, can't see you. Can you please click on your visibility icon?
Uh, I have enabled it. Oh.
It is on? Okay.
Okay, yeah, the connection might be bad. Um, in fact, because tonight I am outside of the Cincinnati Public Schools Education Center, along with a number of other youth, youth activists, uh, who have been out here pretty much all evening, and I would like to implore you, implore you, um, to listen to your community members and students who are telling you the facts about police involvement within schools. Um, I, I think, along with everybody else, uh, we appreciate the fact that you have expressed any interest at all in addressing racism, but the plans you have presented fall seriously short in a number of ways, not least of which, your refusal to truly address police presence within Cincinnati Public Schools. It is going to be a fundamentally incomplete plan until you acknowledge the overall negative role that police officers play within our school communities and the fact that their presence and the ways we were, we, uh, hand out justice within our schools ruin lives. Thank you.
Speaker is Catrice Carpenter, followed by Carrie Kinkle, followed by Gillian Whitaker. Go ahead, Ms. Carpenter.
Are you guys able to hear and see me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Well, first of all, um, I want to give a kudos to the kids out there. Keep going. Hopefully, we can get some resolution. Um, and good job to you guys for, um, sticking with, uh, distance learning because it just is great all over. And, um, hopefully, I can get some emails back as we're speaking on the anti-racism situations. It's just starting to become a bit ridiculous. Just like the kids, we're not going to stop until it's dealt with.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carrie Kinkle, followed by Gillian Whitaker. Go ahead, Ms. Kinkle.
Sure. So, um, well, first I just want to say thanks for, um, doing a much better job with your communications overall, and also, um, Ms. Mitchell for acknowledging and, and hearing your staff and allowing them the options to choose to stay home and teach, um, because I know in past meetings, you know, a lot of those voices were raised and, um, often felt very ignored. So, thanks for that. But my question, um, really is with regard to going back in January, um, and as far as if choosing to not send, um, your, our children back, I mean, ours and our community children, mine specifically, what is that going to look like as far as an option that isn't CDA, um, specific to the homeschool? Two of my children are at one of our Montessori schools, and, um, this has been posed before and was not directly answered. And then, I spoke with our principal, um, about two weeks ago, so shortly before this decision was made, which by the way, I think is a wise one as far as, um, the lack of staff and us outgoing fully remote again, but he was saying that there were not enough numbers of people who withheld, you know, during that sort of two-week trial period, and that the district was going to allow for the individual schools to sort of come up with their own plans, but that was about as far of a explanation that I received. Um, so with that, I wanted to know, how is that going to roll out? What does that mean for teachers? Because are they then charged with doing that in addition to what will be then a blended model, et cetera? So, if someone could speak to that at some point, or if that could come through in an email or a robo-call, um, I know this is planning forward in January, and we don't know where numbers will be then, but it would be helpful to be able to know what I can expect for my students. Um, one is a grade three and one is a grade five, so if you're going to be doing the possibly going, you know, K to three all the way back, um, in, in terms with that, and I'm sure I'm not the only parent who is wondering this and has had no direction.
Yes, ma'am. The, the superintendent, your time is up, but the superintendent would like to respond directly to your question at this time.
Thank you. Fantastic.
So, thank you for your question. This is something that we explored before we were going to go to distance learning. So, what we are in the process of doing is putting together a team that will explore this. This team will be comprised of teachers, parents, principals, and our IT department led by our deputy superintendent, so we can thoroughly understand the views of all parties and what is truly needed to, to make this work and to see what the feasibility is. So, we, um, will be doing that over the next several weeks, and we'll be getting some information back to the board regarding the feasibility of distance learning at your homeschool. Thank you.
Okay. Our, our next speaker is Gillian Whitaker, followed by Youssef Manir, followed by Ruth DeBono. Go ahead, Ms. Whitaker.
Hi, guys. And I just wanted to say thank you for listening to the parents who are really advocating, uh, for a pushback to, uh, looking at the way that the numbers are escalating right now, I can't imagine how I would be feeling if, you know, I knew that there wasn't an end in sight for the kids and for the teachers. Um, I do think though, that we need to be mindful of the way that the district is portraying the teachers. The phone blasting even in the presentation tonight kind of makes the teachers sound irresponsible, and a lot of groups are kind of falling on that, uh, pointing fingers at the teachers, saying this is their fault, when really, like, if we're not testing asymptomatic kids, we just can't be sure. Um, the teachers don't live in a bubble. They have husbands, wives, they have kids who go to school, they have parents they take care of. Um, and when we say, oh, you know, it's whatever's happening in their social lives, that's really detrimental to the relationship, I think, that everybody's trying to build. So, I think we could, you know, try to do a little bit better with that. And additionally, I would really like to advocate that the PARAs be issued technology to take home. Um, we trust them with their kids, so we should be able to trust them with our devices. Um, and finally, I just want to support the kids who are out here, um, before. I've asked several times, um, you know, if the police presence was going to be in the schools during the pandemic, and I couldn't get an answer. It sounds like they are there, so, um, I would also like to advocate for their removal. We've gone over the list before, you all know what it is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And again, the superintendent would like to address your specific concern.
So, thank you, Ms. Whitaker, for, uh, your comments. Um, I will say, at no point in time am I aware of the board or the administration blaming the teachers or any of the staff members whatsoever, um, for going to distance learning. We have actually been supportive of our, uh, teachers and all of our staff members, and, uh, the reason we decided to go to distance learning is because of the staffing concerns, and it wasn't a blame issue. It was reporting of the numbers of people who are absent because they are sick. So, we have worked really hard to empathize and to understand, and in no way, shape, or form blame any of our staff members for being sick or being in quarantine. We support them. Thank you.
Our, excuse me. Our next speaker is Youssef Manir, followed by Ruth DeBono, followed by Sierra Harper. Go ahead, Mr. Manir.
Hello, can you all hear me? Hello, I am back right outside of your building. I'm here right now, and I'm here for the same reason I was last week. I'm here because, well, first I should introduce myself. My name is Youssef Manir. I'm with the Young Activist Coalition, and we're here demanding that you break all ties with the Cincinnati Police Department because they disproportionately criminalize your black and brown students. In fact, black students in CPS make up 62.7% of, uh, the entire student population, but they make up 85% of all police referrals. And now, I want to go through some school-specific data because it only gets worse. In fact, in Aiken High School, black students make up 88%, but including all people of color, they make up, uh, how many police referrals? Um, they make up 100% of out-of-school suspensions, and, oh, this does not have police referrals. Anyway, you disproportionately punish and criminalize your black and brown students. You disproportionately criminalize them. You are responsible for the school-to-prison pipeline. We want you to make a good decision. We want you to implement transformative and restorative justice in our CPS schools because your students deserve better, and your students deserve justice, not an anti-racism policy that doesn't even begin to mention the police. And not only that, it doesn't even have an implementation plan. It's just words on paper, just like every single other anti-racism plan you guys have ever had. Thank you. Do better.
Speaker is Ruth DeBono, followed by Sierra Harper, followed by Christopher Mildrow.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay. Um, hi, I'm Ruth DeBono. I'm a student at Walnut Hills, I'm a student at Walnut Hills High School, and, um, like others, I appreciate that you are trying to make up anti-racism plan, but I think an integral, an integral part of any anti-racism plan- think an integral part of any anti-racism plan has to include taking police officers out of schools due to the harmful effects that this has on students of color. Also, it's also important to implement restorative justice because students of color are disproportionately expelled and suspended, which leads to their criminalization and doesn't actually allow them to learn and grow in a good environment. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sierra Harper, followed by Christopher Muldro.
Hello. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Can you click on the visibility icon, please?
That's the camera?
Yes.
Hold on. It's asking me to allow you to do it. I'm sorry. Can you see me now?
No.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm a parent and I'm also a partner in one of our schools. And first, because I didn't, I just want to say this, I don't believe that you should take the police officers out of the schools. I just think you maybe you should change the police officers and do something different. I'll say that part, just because I kept hearing it over and over again. But what I wanted to say real quickly was, it would be super great if you guys, when you come up with a plan, that you stick to the plan. And I don't mean like the going back and forth because of the numbers. Regardless of the numbers, we can be completely honest. And we know that when we come back January 4th, everybody's been at home or wherever they've been, with whoever they've been with, let's just have a plan for January so that parents can make a plan, teachers can make a plan, community centers, learning hubs, everybody can have a plan and they already know what it is and not be waiting on pins and needles. It's very stressful not to know if you're going to school, not going to school. And it just, to me, it just makes more sense. And it would be easier on taxpayers, maybe not on taxpayers, but it'd be easier on parents and it should be easier on you and everybody else involved if there was a plan and we stuck to the plan. I appreciate everything that you all have done, everything that you all have said. I am not a CPS graduate. I actually grew up outside of Cincinnati, Wentworth, thank you, Forest Park. But I really wanted my kids to be a part of it when we started living in the city. And so I'm behind CPS. And I just want, I would really like the communication, as you all have already started doing, to be wonderful. But every school, I have three kids in three different schools, and I can tell you right now, everything doesn't go out across the board once it becomes individualized. So...
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up, but we thank you for your comment.
Our next speaker is Christopher Muldro, followed by CFT President Julie Sellers. Go ahead, Mr. Muldro.
Yes. I've been making the point not to talk about COVID and I don't want to talk about COVID. I'm not saying it's important. But on the Cincinnati COVID tracker...
Can you please click on your camera so we can see you?
All right. I've been making the point not to talk about COVID, not that it's not important. But I did want to point out on the CPS COVID tracker that's on your website, it says, as of May, there have only been 286 confirmed cases of COVID. So it seems like the data that you're presenting tonight is, what you have on your website is far behind what you're presenting tonight. But I had the opportunity to talk to Dr. Dinglaze about the two different instructional models that are being ran at CPS or that were being ran in CPS prior when we were using the at-home instruction. And one is what we seen at Walnut Hills in Evanston, which was 24 hours of instruction. And then the other one that we saw at Western Hills, which was barely 12 hours of instruction, where students were receiving two hours or less in each subject area per week. It was brought to my attention that with the second instructional model that provided less than half of the instructional time, it was due to maybe concerns with screen time. I would ask that you do away with that instructional model. And I would point to that, what do the students do after they actually get off the screen when they're not with their teacher? They're on their laptops. They're using the digital resources. They're using the electronic platforms that they've been told to do work on. We've given all of our students laptops because we understand that a lot of them don't have access to electronics. So it's not like a lot of our students have printers in their home and they're printing out their work. When the teacher gets off the screens, they're still forced to stay on the screen. So I would ask that we do away with that second instructional model. It has been brought to my attention that some changes are being made, yet to be seen. They have yet to release the new Western Hills schedule. But it seems like maybe we will be getting instruction on Monday and we will be starting at eight. So look forward to seeing that and hopefully we do away with that old instructional model. Thank you.
Our last speaker is CFT President Julie Sellers. Go ahead, Ms. Sellers.
Hello, everyone. I would just like to say that I am very glad that as a district and board, you wrote the resolution supporting the new funding formula from the state of Ohio. Although it may not be perfect, it is a great start to begin properly funding schools. I think that it will be a great bonus to CPS to not have the charter and voucher money taken as pass-through dollars out of the CPS budget because we backfill those by 40%. And so it will leave more money within the budget for the CPS students. Secondly, I think that it's great that the board did make the decision and the superintendent made the decision that teachers have the option to either work from their classroom or from their home, depending on their individual situations. And this will then be able to provide the environment for the safety of the CPS staff. I do think that with the way the numbers are escalating this week and one recent day, we had 20 positive cases between students and students and staff in one day. And these are numbers that are escalating weekly, that I wish that this would have happened last week and that I just keep praying that no one within the CPS staff or students or their families pass in the next few weeks as we are seeing these escalating cases. That is what has been brought up in the news, that it takes time for cases to escalate and then hospital cases. And then that follows with more intense outcomes. So hopefully, everybody has a safe holiday. I just wish I could say to everyone in the public, we must have everyone having, covering their faces with masks and their noses with masks because everywhere I go, I'm seeing people unmasked or with their noses hanging out of their mask, which does no good. Because we do need to get back to school, but we cannot get back to school until in Cincinnati and Hamilton County, our cases are in the green, the yellow, or the orange ranges. We know that the safety measures that are put in place work in those levels, but they do not work if we are in red and purple. So we are more than double now of the number of cases of the number of cases per 100,000. And I wish that this week, we were no longer in school. But have a great holiday weekend and let's make sure that we try to do as much as we can to prevent any further illnesses. Thank you.
Okay. That's our last person. So we'll move on. Thank you to the public for your comments. Does anyone have any kudos? Ms. Bolton?
Yes, I am very, very pleased and proud and hope we'll be able to see these. Maybe the superintendent will be able to work it into her, one of her reports soon. But want to congratulate all the winners of the 34th Annual Corbett Maerson Awards. There is a really great, small, short video that has been produced by Jeff Seibert, and it'd be great for everybody to have an opportunity to see it. Congratulations.
Thank you. Any other kudos? All righty. Ms. Bates, are there any retirements?
No retirements.
No retirements. Wow. Somebody might win that bet about time tonight, so we'll see. Okay. Board matters, concerns, Mr. Maraski, you're up first.
Thank you, President Jones. Of course, not that we, not that we make friendly bets about how long the meetings will be. So I'll dive right in. This is not new to anybody on this board or probably tuning in. But on June 10th, there was an assignment to create an anti-racism policy for the district that has been in the Policy and Equity Committee since. The original draft and all the edits have been made by Assistant General Counsel Stephanie Scott, who I think started like a week before the assignment was made. So kudos to Ms. Scott. The first draft that we had, as you'll recall, was very long and had a number of procedural items in it. The policy was then revised in Policy Committee, and then it went to Health and Safety, where some awesome suggestions were made. And then on November 6th, Policy Committee meeting, as addressed earlier, board member concerns and comments and questions were brought to administration. And what resulted in all of that, plus the community input that was discussed in the presentation of the minutes, is the policy in front of you today. I'm not going to go through it line by line and insult people's intelligence. I would just like to call out a couple sort of highlights. And to reiterate, it would be great, you know, I think if we could have this in the bag and ready to go in December, if for no other reason than we have a burgeoning curriculum as well, an anti-racism curriculum, and having the two support one another, I think, makes all the sense in the world. So again, just to call out a few of the high-level things and then just to let you know, like, kind of where my head is, just speaking as the Chair of the Policy Committee. I fully intend to probably have this on Board Matters next week, too, pending this discussion. Ms. Scott is here tonight, so thank you for being here, Ms. Scott, if there are any questions that she would need to answer and also to take the feedback that is heard tonight and incorporate it if need be. Policy Committee, of course, meets the first Friday in December, where if we have everybody's input and we feel good, we could pass it out of committee at that time and bring back to the full board one last time. So in going through this new draft, which is shorter, I want to call out first an appendices that has a number of the procedural elements that gave folks, myself included, cause for pause. The beginning of that appendix, it's two pages at your table. At the beginning is a community recommendation paragraph. It's the only piece that's new that I would just draw your attention to, stating that "Understanding the board is tasked with giving authority to the district to implement the anti-racism policy and therefore discretion in the methods and practices that will be used. The below information includes procedural recommendations from the anti-racism working group identified during the review process, et cetera." So those items have been excised from the policy itself and placed in this two-page appendix. Back to the policy, 2255 dot something. Of course, the 2255 references the equity policy that President Jones, Ms. Bolton, and Ms. Bates were instrumental in drafting. It was recommended we take language and include language from the equity policy in this one, which you will see we have done. The redlined draft, which is now a red line, green line, blue line, gray line, underline, it's a little unwieldy at this point, so I'm kind of working off of the new, the new one that's cleaner, but you have both in front of you. We moved the definitions to the beginning, which was a unanimous sort of recommendation. Under purpose, you will see words like "work" instead of words like "strive." It was recommended by Ms. Bolton and others that we be a little more direct in our language. We added back in students with disabilities. When you go down to anti-racism policy directives, the next underlined piece on page two, you will notice that we dropped institutional, structural, et cetera, and just used systemic throughout. And so it was getting kind of confusing. Somebody, a few people brought that up. I'm trying to, you know, recognize everyone individually, but a lot of these were shared, and that was one that was shared. Under communication, a whole lot of that got moved out and put in the appendices. And a part that I thought was great that was added in, you'll see a line that begins, "The district will identify key benchmarks that demonstrate growth in each area." That is a piece that, again, I just want to call out some significant changes. I think that was one. Moving on to page three. Under leadership and administration, a number of things removed that were procedural. Ms. Bolton was much more direct in her suggestions in the original draft, and we actually went, pretty much included Ms. Bolton's suggestions, basically verbatim. Her suggestions, as you'll see, began, "The board shall direct the superintendent treasure, et cetera." So it's more the board directing as opposed to sort of amorphous kind of suggestions. And each one statement will begin with a verb, develop, direct, identify, embed. We liked that a great deal and included that language. It's very different than the original one. Curriculum instruction, some was moved out. It was suggested in one of the documents that we removed the curriculum instruction because it was addressed under leadership and administration. I felt that some of that curriculum and instruction was good in there, particularly if we're going to have a new curriculum. So we can talk about anything, of course. That included. Training and professional development, much of it was moved to the appendices. You'll note hiring practices, a little bit was moved, the pieces that were more prescriptive in nature. Policy enforcement, for a whole lot of probably obvious reasons, just baked into that word enforcement, a lot of that was moved to the appendix because it was pretty prescriptive. A new piece, though, that I'll call out, and then I'm pretty much done with my part to the highlighting part. Something that is new, that I think is strong, are those last two pieces that begin, "When it is determined that a student, teacher, or staff member has committed a racist act, the person will be provided the opportunity to learn about the impact of their actions through restorative practices, mediation, role play, or other explicit policies, training resources. The district shall ensure there are various, including anonymous, means for students and staff to report racism and other forms of discrimination." Mr. Messer brought up in our Policy Committee, if I may, and he obviously speaks to this more than me, but he had brought up that some of these things, like those pieces, since this policy is so important and so overarching over everything that we're doing and all the different little systems and our big system, that it would be important and instructive to not have procedural elements, but more sort of direct elements in here, like this piece. So if we are to disrupt systems, which I know this board is interested in doing for the betterment of all kids, we thought that pieces like those last couple I just highlighted were important. And I will pause. This is the newest draft. And welcome any feedback, questions that I could answer, or other committee members, Ms. Bowers, Mr. Messer, or even Ms. Scott, who's here tonight.
And board members have any comments, questions? Mr. Messer?
Yeah. Thank you, Mike, or Mr. Maraski. So, you know, tonight, we heard again from some students who had some comments about the anti-racism and a perceived lack of completion without mention of police. I don't remember them being on any of our committee agendas. I mean, had they reached out, you know, because speaking at public forum is one thing, but understanding, you know, and I think you've done a fabulous job of bringing this up so many times and talking about the next step is back to committee. People like to, and I know we had our advisory group. Was that ever discussed in any of the groups? And is it potentially worth running a filter through our advisory committee on this topic to get their pulse on whether it should be included?
So the first question, no. It didn't come up in any of the sessions with the task force. The second, I assume there obviously could be numerous opinions on that topic. I don't know necessarily if SSRO program needs to be included in this. I think this could be used on passage to maybe look at that program in and of itself. But that's just my opinion. But no, it didn't come up in any of the groups, though. Not explicitly, anyway.
Ms. Bolton?
I think directly, the current draft, and actually all of the drafts that I've seen from the community, from the committee and the board itself, speak very directly to the issue of disproportionality. It's very clear that that is a focus, and indeed, the systemic racism is not only mentioned, but it is throughout this policy. So I think that from that standpoint, it does start to deal with the, with the problem at hand and what needs to be remedied. I don't know if we can list any more ways to remedy these issues, but if it would be, it would be, it might be one more phrase that I don't think is correct. The school-to-prison pipeline is actually, it's the dropout pipeline to prison. That's the issue, rather than school-to-prison pipeline, but maybe that seemed to be part of their undercurrent, rather than addressing the police issue, because that's another one. Maybe as a remedy or a reference to the pipeline might be there.
Ms. Bates?
I don't know if you're familiar with the book, Michelle Alexander's, The New Jim Crow, and that explicitly explains what the school-to-prison pipeline is. And it's not SROs, it's, you know, the war on drugs. So we, just so we are clear that, you know, we've done our homework on that issue, and we know what, you know, what that really is. And I mean, it's, it's, you know, another one of those situations where the intentions were good, and the implementation of the war on drugs had devastating effects on, you know, on the African-American community. And we're, you know, our leaders in those areas are attempting to undo that. But to put the burden on the school system when someone who has spent years researching the school-to-prison pipeline did not come up with those results, I think is unfair. And I would urge those individuals who are, you know, who are under that impression to read The New Jim Crow by Michelle Alexander.
And I think, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I appreciate that, Ms. Bates, and that's an important book. And in addition, you're much kinder than me when you say it had good intentions. Ideally, the war on drugs had good intentions. I'm not, I'm not so certain. But your point is well taken, that, and it's referenced in here in the sense that there is this history that's led to now, while we, current incarnation of folks up here, may not have created this situation. It's ours to deal with. And so I think that word disruption that we use there at the end is a good one, and if, you know, a policy can create the framework or guardrails, for lack of a better analogy, to disrupt that history, that's outlined in that book, I think is, is great. So anyhow, I just wanted to say I appreciated your comment.
Mr. Lindy?
Thanks, President Jones. I think I primarily want to just share my gratitude and appreciation from Mr. Maraski and the entire Policy Committee. I think this issue is an incredibly important one. I think our district had a history for hundreds of years of running a segregated school district, and the fact that we don't run a segregated school district anymore just means that we can spend, I think, disproportionate energies trying to make our city and our country what we hope that it is. And I think this could be an exciting step forward. I appreciate Mike taking my feedback on a couple things I noticed. And I particularly liked the idea of having the, like, benchmarks to demonstrate growth over time. I thought that was very helpful. I think on the just kind of questions or other feedback side, I think one, you all may have looked at this already, but this makes me wonder what other school districts have done. You know, like, and have we looked at other districts' anti-racism policies? We may have already, but I'd just be curious, are there lessons for us to learn, mistakes we could avoid making that other districts have made? And then I think I continue to have some ongoing concern about length. I think at the end of the day, I defer to the committee, and I'm excited to support what you all recommend. But I think that there's a, there's a beauty in, I think, creating some room for the administration to lead and come up with their own ideas, which I think our administration would do very well.
So I'm going to start at the end and back up. Yes, about the brevity, when I was teaching English, I always encouraged my students to try to make their point with less amount of pages, and that more pages did not equal better grades. I actually think four pages to deal with 400 years of system is pretty good, because this was much longer. I hear you, though, and if we can still trim it down, I know we'd love to. So we'll look at if there's still any fat left. I know, and Ms. Scott and I looked at it after the Policy Committee looked at it and presented everyone's feedback. This, we, I feel pretty good about four pages, but I, we welcome anyone else's feedback as well. And to your other point about other districts, and I welcome Ms. Scott to come down. She, she really deserves the kudos and applause and everything for getting this to this point. She has done an amazing job, and I really mean that. And she can talk about some of the districts she looked at to get started, if that's okay, Ms. Scott. I know you gave up your evening to be with us. I want to give you an opportunity. She looked at districts around the country. I don't know that there's any peers in the state of Ohio that we can say, but she, she looked at some best practices, and there weren't a ton to go off of. So this is, would be a pretty, pretty big and groundbreaking seems melodramatic, but policy, so I'll turn it over to Ms. Stephanie Scott.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have those specific notes, but I will kind of mimic what Mike is saying. When we actually initially started doing the research, there actually wasn't much out in the country that a lot of people were doing. There were a couple of policies in Virginia, which kind of is the basis for the policy that kind of, which started our policy tonight. So really, I think when we started this back in June, that was something that we learned, that we were, could be on the cusp of actually being at the forefront of getting these policies out there, at least at the high school, or, you know, the school, this public school level. There really wasn't much. Most of it was at the collegiate level, and it wasn't, there were more so resolutions and things of that nature. I don't know if there's any other specific questions, but to kind of just say that this is actually, we are still at the forefront. So really, what we're doing could actually be used as the model for other districts across the country, really.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Yeah, that was, and I can send anybody the, what we looked at at the beginning, but yeah, it's exciting and definitely, again, I would say in Ohio, we're one of the only ones talking about it. I've gotten emails, calls to the board office, other districts wanted to talk to us, and I just tell them, like, ours isn't finished. So when it's finished, we can talk about it, but not, not before.
Ms. Bates?
Yeah, and I just want to make a comment. We, our equity policy, same thing. We were one of the first in the country to have an equity policy, and likewise, we're, we're doing this. We, I like to say this, another one of my, okay, I'm going to, no, he's going to say this again, but really, when you look at the urban districts across the country, we're, we're at a doable size. We can do these things and lead, and that's what we've been doing. So that happens very frequently, that we're in a position to, you know, community learning centers, equity policy, you know, you name, now, distance learning, you name it, we're, we're really pretty much out there leading the charge and helping other districts in the state and this country also.
Okay. And then I, my comment, I like the way it's kind of shaped out here, and I appreciate my comments being incorporated. I do think that, and when is your next committee meeting?
December 4th, 4:30 PM.
Okay. I want to read it through there. In my mind, I think what's standing out for me is a question or comment, and I would rather just offer a suggestion around it, so I want to read it first. But, you know, our role as a board is to govern and provide oversight, you know. But I think there are things like our equity policy and anti-racism where we have to be participants. And so what that means is, when it comes to training and professional development, we also must have that. And so I think it would behoove us to write something that gives it teeth. And we did that with the equity policy, and it's, I can't remember exactly what it said, but I do want to go back. But I think it's incumbent on us to make sure that we are also, we can't dictate, or not dictate, but that's the wrong word, but direct a policy that we, especially a policy like this, that we are not participants in. So I would offer that, and I will maybe write a couple of statements and pass that on to you, Mr. Maraski. Go ahead.
Would it be prudent to include this, excuse me, on Board Matters for next Monday for those comments?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, to follow up on what you said, we'll recall that the State Board of Education had a very, very precise, very direct statement about their training. And in here, one of the areas is that we're going to be trained in the policy. We need to be trained in anti-racism, not just the, so, but, and I know that in health and safety, I think that was one of the things that was lifted as well in that committee about the training, that we have to be able to be knowledgeable and experienced in that, too. So your point's well taken.
Yep.
And we, yes, like we have talked about here a couple of times, we're, another thing, we're lucky being in Cincinnati, to Ms. Bates's point, this doable district, I like that, I'm going to steal it. We have all the diversity in the different groups of a bigger district. You learn when you go to these council, great city school events, but we can wrap our arms around the city. It's not Boston or Philadelphia. We also have an insane amount of folks who are nationally recognized and credentialed and accredited to do that kind of work, too, for us to kind of go through. And we have these board retreats. We've already talked, we're already putting a bunch of stuff on the agenda for January, but, I mean, you know, that would be a great time to do that kind of thing. And then I'll put this on the agenda for next week, but I appreciate all y'alls input. It's been, it's been great. Thanks again to Ms. Scott for your guidance and help and work.
Okay. Thank you. We just blew our time thing, but anyway, it was worthwhile. Thank you, Mr. Maraski. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is a discussion Withrow Tennis Facility. Ms. Bolton?
I'm going to make up that time right now. I'm going to take it from the Maraski clock. We all were introduced to this a couple of months ago via the Finance Committee having dealt with this, and we said we would come back to the board again. This is the plan from the Cincinnati Tennis Foundation to create a Cincinnati Community Tennis and Education Center on the campus, available acreage campus of Withrow, to create a tennis facility, an education facility. We've been assured by the administration that the area of the campus that the foundation is interested in is not scheduled for any other development for Withrow, and that there is no cost to us in the development of it, except to cede the property to the foundation, and then indeed, it would be ceded back to us, and it would be available to our students district-wide. So it's an interesting opportunity and partnership. Some of the issues are indeed to provide the growth of tennis in the inner city, and also to begin to continue to develop the programs that have kind of an embryonic stage, if you will, in many of our schools regarding tennis for younger people. It would also be used for community as well. And as some of you know, the whole Withrow campus starts to be all part of the walking and bike path and that's running across, if you will, the city. So it's a very exciting opportunity. And again, the administration, at least in finance, and I haven't heard anything different, has said that this is a reasonable thing for us to do and would be a great benefit to us. And the foundation is looking for nods, and doesn't really necessarily require a resolution, but we could do that if we feel more comfortable, but that they want to know that we're interested in doing that.
Do board members have questions or comments? Ms. Bates, and then Mr. Lindy?
Didn't something similar occur at Walnut Hills? The Walnut Hills Foundation funded the renovation of the tennis courts there, and if that's the case, can we look at how that occurred, if we have precedent?
Sure.
Because that was, that was a successful way of venture, so.
General Counsel's approaching. General Counsel is actually running, showing the whole athletic experience.
Thanks. Good evening. At Walnut Hills, there was, the courts were built by the Walnut Hills Foundation, and we've got kind of a model that we've used. It's the same model we use as improvements to the Western Hills athletic facilities. So that is a model we'll suggest. This would be, I mean, in fairness, this would be a substantially larger project than what happened at Walnut Hills or Western Hills.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Mr. Lindy?
Member Bolton, can you just clarify for me, I'm sorry, the, is there like an ask or a next step on the table, or just discussion?
The ask, I should have also said, and Mr. Lindy mentioned this when we first presented this, too, that Mr. Lindy was very persistent at the Finance Committee, making sure that this was something that fit into the grand plan, if you will, of Withrow's instructional program and business center program. So I appreciate that from, from, from Member Lindy. This next ask is that they would like some official agreement that we are willing to proceed with the property give, if you will, under the stipulations that they mentioned at Finance, and we're in the minute. So I think the next thing is whether that's an official resolution, that we would like that, or whether it's a letter from the superintendent or board president, or if it's General Counsel and also Robin Brandon somehow engaging in some sort of MOU or whatever. So I think it's, it's any one of those paths, and I would actually take the advice of General Counsel as to what would be the best path.
So I, I mean, a letter of intent would be presumably the next kind of step, but we can talk to them and see if that's sufficient and present it to you.
That'd be great. Well, I think the other questions I had was just, I remember the Finance Committee I had asked whether we had any information about parents with their kids and what they thought about this idea. I haven't heard anything about that since then. Is there new information there?
I haven't seen the follow-up from them, but we'll, I guess in this coming Finance meeting, we'll make it an assignment, and maybe the administration from Withrow will be able to report back.
That's great. I mean, I haven't been able to find anybody who doesn't like this idea, and I'm certainly not going to just create a reason not to do it. But to me, it feels important to know that the administration thinks it's a good idea, and that the parents of the kids at Withrow think it's a good idea. And if all those folks say yes, then you got a yes from me.
Thank you. Mr. Messer?
So actually, you got one of my questions, which was kind of the, the school community and what type of engagement had been there. I mean, I can't imagine, but making them feel like they're a part of it, if it's going to be on the campus of the Withrow School. So that was question one. And the other question was, the only downside I can think about is, let's say they go belly up with foundations, you never know, and let's say they lose all their money, then what? Does it revert back to CPS? Do they own it outright? Ms. Bolton is often saying, you know, we need to make sure we don't, we got to keep property. We actually need more property going forward. So presumably, we would have some agreement with them, that if they decided to pack up and leave, what would happen?
So those are the contingencies that we take account for when, when we reach that agreement. And again, same thing with, I mean, on a smaller scale, but the same thing with the tennis courts that were built at Walnut. If the foundation had gotten halfway through and then said, "We really don't want to finish," or "We haven't seen the fundraising." I mean, we ensure the project is bonded, we ensure that, again, that we've accounted for those concerns ahead of time.
Okay. So your suggestion, Mr. Hoing, is that we develop a letter of intent as the next step?
step?
Yeah, we can work with the proponents to put something together that's acceptable to them, and then ensure that it's acceptable to you.
Wonderful. Okay.
Thank you.
All righty. Next item, just stay up here, Mr. Hoing. Ms. Bolton, Mr. Hoing, on the Columbia Township CRA?
Yeah, again, this was shared a couple of weeks ago out of Finance, and Mr. Hoing's going to come report to us again what this is, and indeed, we're passing a resolution, we hope, later this evening. So, Mr. Hoing, if it's okay, Madam President, have him just once again present about the Columbia Township CRA.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, very briefly, we were approached by Columbia Township about a proposed TIF district in the Plainville Business District, which is kind of in the Madison Place neighborhood. The proposal was to create a TIF district there. A lengthy proposal was presented at the last Finance Committee meeting. Kind of our approach on these has not changed. The district's approach has been that we're relatively agnostic in terms of whether or not it's a good idea or bad idea in terms of tax incentive or CRA, the Community Reinvestment Act. We rely, I think heavily, on our municipal partners, like Columbia Township, City of Cincinnati, Silverton, Cheviot, to make that determination of whether it's a wise idea or not. Our review has been limited to, are we made whole, so that the school district's dollars are not used to incentivize that development. That's been our approach, and so when we were presented with this, the Columbia Township Administrator, Melissa Taylor, did report to the Finance Committee on what's involved, but our review was primarily whether or not the district was being made whole, and I can say that the plan that's been presented to us would make us whole, consistent with other arrangements that we've made with other municipal partners. So, we are recommending that the Board approve the resolution that's before you tonight.
And that resolution is on the table tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any questions? Anything else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. So, we are ready to present our resolutions, and I'm going to go through as quickly as I need to. Mr. Lindy, please present the first resolution.
Thank you, President Jones. I have a resolution to appoint a representative of the Ohio School Boards Association Board of Trustees. And am I right that we're going to make this our President Jones?
Well, when we open up for discussion, we can do that.
Okay.
Okay. You're presenting the motion?
I'm presenting the motion as written.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, discussion?
I understand that President Jones should be our nominee.
I'm the current rep, and usually, we do this in January, but we're always behind the eight ball, so we're always late, so we're doing it now. I would, I would love to continue to participate as the district's representative. Ms. Wagner, please call and roll. I don't hear any strong, it's actually been interesting. It's been interesting, so I'm really, okay. Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Bolton, can you present the resolution, the next resolution?
Okay. A resolution authorizing school compensation agreement between the Board of Education of the City of Cincinnati School District and the Board of Trustees of Columbia Township. This is in reference to what we just had presented to us by General Counsel. Again, it's gone through Finance, it's gone through General Counsel's office, and present for passage.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Ms. Wagner?
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
President Jones?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Morosky, please present the following resolution.
My pleasure. I would like to present a resolution, Amending Board Policy 3220, Feature Evaluation. This is the aforementioned OTES 2.0. I present, the resolution is written.
Thank you. Is there a second? Discussion? Wagner?
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky, the next one?
Thank you, President Jones. I would like to present a resolution, Amending Board Policy 3220.01, School Counselor Evaluation. Again, the aforementioned OTES 2.0. I present, the resolution is written.
Is there a second? Discussion? Ms. Wagner?
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Okay. Where are we?
Ms. Bowers?
Ms. Bowers, please present the following resolution.
Yes, I am presenting a resolution, Amending Board Policy 7540.01, Employee Communication with District Technology. I present this resolution as written.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? I believe that this is the one. I had some concerns about it, I'm okay with the content, but on this one, if you look on, in the revised one, revised section, the language of, okay, at the last paragraph, it says, "The Board designates the Superintendent and the Chief Information Officer and Building Principles as the administration's responsible for implementing." But throughout the body, it talks about the Board utilizing software and the Board implementing. I think we need, that's really not a function of the Board, so we probably need to change the language a little bit to reflect that it really is the Superintendent and her designated staff, just for consistency.
Yeah, I think that's right, and so, the, it was 7540.01, correct?
01?
Yeah, that one, this is not the one that has that piece. I believe the one you're talking about.
754004?
Yeah, it's 04.
I don't have 01.
Because I was trying to figure out where you were reading that.
Yeah, 01, 01 is not the one, Ms. Jones. 01 doesn't have the language that was concerning to you.
Okay.
It's 04.
I don't even have this one. I'm sorry. Was it in our package?
Yeah, it was.
Okay. And you keep, keep it, aren't you?
The, um, the big.
I have the wrong policy.
The most substantive change in here was regarding, anything conducted via personal devices or personal accounts, maybe considered public records, felt it was important to call that out, so that employees realize that, because we realize it, but they may not. And then the other piece, communication on virtual platforms should be appropriate and professional in accordance with the district social policy. Those were the substantive.
Okay. Okay. So, that, we're good, we can move on that. Ms. Bowers, you're presenting that?
Yes. I now have a resolution, Amending Board Policy 7540.03.
Hold on, we got to vote first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We need a second on that motion.
I seconded it.
You seconded it, okay. Thank you. We're at, we had discussion. Ms. Wagner? Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Bolton, next policy?
Do you want me to do this?
Ms. Bowers?
I have another one.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes. I now have a resolution, I'm presenting a resolution, Amending Board Policy 7540.03, Student Network and Internet Acceptable Use and Safety. I present this board policy as written.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Ms. Bolton?
I have a question, and I don't know if it's just that I had reviewed the racism draft, but I didn't know if in this one, there should be some sort of, it talks about inappropriate, I just wondered if there should be some sort of discussion, discriminatory or racial language or talk or whatever. It's a little generic, but you can see the things we've cared about over time, that the bullying and whatever, but I just didn't know if there was a place that we could begin to, even though we haven't passed the racism policy, and I'm not saying cite that, but that some sort of racial flirt, discriminatory, whatever, if it might fit somewhere. I don't know.
Yes, Mr. Morosky?
I'm wondering if there might be the possibility of alluding to, of course, we haven't passed the anti-racism policy, so I'm talking about the future, but we have a number of policies that we could reference in here, like, you know, websites that violate 2255, 2255 dot, and then, I, we could make, I think, I think actually, it makes sense to be a little stronger with this. This is a little, I agree.
Can we revisit this one?
It's fine with me. Yeah, no, it's fine, it's fine with me, and Mr. Hoing is nodding, and so we'll put it back to committee on December 6th, yeah.
Okay, also, as you're taking it back to committee, I had the same concerns that I expressed on the previous incorrect one. This one is the same, if you look at second and third paragraph in comparison, it says, "The Board will implement measures."
That's right.
Yeah, so I think the language has to be consistent and, as a function of the district.
Okay, yeah.
So, this is going back to committee?
That'll go back to committee.
Okay. All righty. Mr. Messer, please present the next resolution.
Yes, I present Resolution, Amending Board Policy 7540.04, Staff Network and Internet Acceptable Use and Safety.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
You.
That's me. That's the one.
This is yours.
So, it, again, throughout here, just being consistent, that the function of implementation is with the district administration, and so the language should reflect that.
And if.
Gotcha, yes, sir.
Just to highlight for General Counsel, specifically, there's, there's language on page three, the third to last paragraph begins, "The Board has implemented," et cetera. Second to last paragraph, "The Board utilizes software," so again, just that consistency piece of, the Board's not really doing that, it's the district administration. Is that correct, President Jones?
Yes, it's actually all through the document.
Okay. Does that make sense? Excellent. We'll shelve that one too.
Okay.
Put it on agenda for December 6th?
So, we'll, we'll put that on hold. Thank you. All righty. Mr. Messer, I have you again for Policies 7540.05, Employee Electronic Mail.
Yes, 7540.05, Employee Electronic Mail. I present the resolution as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Wagner, please call and roll. Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right, then we have the final resolution. Ms. Bolton?
And that is the Fair Funding?
Yep.
Resolution, thank you. This is what we heard, the presentation by the Treasurer today, and had some discussion previously today. A resolution to endorse the fair school funding plan as introduced in the Senate Companion Bill to substitute House Bill 305, and to encourage the 133rd General Assembly to expedite the passage of the bill. I present, and hope for passage.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call and roll. Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. All righty, Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report?
The only report that I have is the Superintendent's Recommendations in writing.
Wonderful. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendations of the Superintendent?
So moved.
Thank you. Discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the revised report of the Treasurer? Thank you. Is there a second? Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call and roll. Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Any inquiries and updates? All right, hearing none. All right, any assignments? Ms. Bolton?
I would like to see if it would be possible for the Superintendent to share that video from the Maerson Corbett Awards.[1700.88]